Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye, I hereby call the Wednesday, November 12, 2025 Planning Board Meeting to order. Y'all please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Was there a flag pullback here? Isn't that the Florida flag leaning here? It didn't fall on Tom Trask again, did it? Remember that video, purple heart flag fell on Tom?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Should be on YouTube. Okay, welcome everyone and welcome to the new members. Welcome aboard, welcome aboard, and let's have, let's have some fun. I will now open the Citizens Open Forum, any individual wishing to speak to any item that's not in the, well, they can speak to a public hearing that's, there's nothing on the agenda to speak of. Anything on your mind, you come up to the podium, you've got five minutes, chat away. Identify yourself, please, name and address.
Gail Richardson, 611 Kobe Way, Oldsmar.
Thank you, welcome.
And we are interested in having more information about the setbacks that are being created for Guller.
That's a public hearing agenda item, you will hear about that when that item is addressed as, what is it, item five, item, hang on a second. Item six, so you may speak then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Swearing in process, anyone wishing to speak, pro four or against, please raise your hand and swear in.
Are you folks planning to speak on the agenda later? Thank you, please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item one, approval of the minutes dated September 24th. I seek a motion on the approval of said minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None seen, none unanimous vote. Motion passed. We will now consider the excused absence of September 4th meeting of Bob Harvey. May I, I seek a motion on this excused absence, please.
Make a motion to excuse Bob Harvey's.
Thank you, a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Glad you're with us, Bob.
I have no discussion.
While you're sitting next to me.
Don't do it again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Hey, hearing none, the motion passes. The consideration number, item number three, consideration excused absence September 4th of Ross Roundhouse. I seek a motion for that item.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? You bring postcards from Alaska and Mexico? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, glad you're still with us, Ross. Okay, rec, number four, recommendation city council and planning board alternate member appointment. Two applicants, are they both here? Just the one? Okay, so I guess we're only going to be inviting, and I've seen you before, so welcome back.
Hi, Jim.
Thank you, I'm so glad to be back.
Please identify yourselves.
Do you know anything, my name is Jim Mascarinis. My wife and I have lived in the area for the past six years. And just this past summer, we were blessed to be able to buy our first home ever. And we couldn't choose a better place than here.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
It's a big step.
I know, and I love it so much, it's, over the past six months of just living here, we've really fallen in love with the city. It was actually just yesterday, we were watching Hallmark Christmas movies on TV, and I was like, that's the town that we live in. It's just so beautiful, it's a beautiful small town charm, but it's also vibrant and up and coming and so close to all of the wonderful things. So we really, really love it here. I just graduated, got the certificate today from our Citizens Academy, and it's been so wonderful seeing how the city is run. And I'd really, really love to be on the planning board for the city. My day-to-day life, I work as the Religious Education Director for a church in Tampa called Christ the King. And through that, I run all of the children's and family ministries for that church. And I really feel like it's my God-given duty to really serve the people of this community. And what better way to start serving the city of Oldsmar than to come onto a board and to oversee all of this? And even just reading the agenda today, I was like, yes, this is it, this is what I want to be a part of. So I would really, really love to be on this board, and I'd really love to serve this beautiful city that I now have a chance to really get my roots in as well.
Thank you. We will entertain questions from the board, Toni, do you have any questions for this young man?
Aye, done.
Lynette?
No questions, congratulations on your house.
Thank you.
Have you previously served on any other, like, city boards?
No city boards, but I've been working in churches for the past 13 years. And through that, I've been on many boards, church boards, where we've built churches, three churches and about 14 facility buildings on top of that. And through that, I have a bit of experience with land use, zoning, some permitting here and there. But this would be my first real kind of foray into city board life.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well? No, nothing.
After graduating from the Citizens Academy, do you feel like you know much more about the city?
Absolutely, you should see my little folder of like notes, it's so full. But it really gave me a new appreciation for the city and all the hard work that goes into making everything happen.
Jessica, any questions?
No, no questions, welcome, Citizens Academy graduate, 2018.
Nice.
Okay, I was 22.
Well, I don't have any questions. Thank you, wel, welcome. Since you're the only one that came, and this is an alternate position, right? And do we have, we have one alternate, Amber's the first alternate, you'll be the second alternate. So I'll entertain a motion on sending this gentleman's name to council for final approval. I seek a motion in that regard.
So moved.
A second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? None heard, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes, you will then go visit the city council at their next meeting if you want to, they like to see the person first time. I never go back. Know me, that's it, you're done with me showing up there, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for coming back, too.
All right, I close that item, that item is closed. So, now there is, okay, going up to recommend in number five, CA 25, time to take your pills. Okay, number five, CA 2505 Code Amendment to the City of Oldsmar Land Development Code, amending Article 2 Adult Entertainment Code, this is a public hearing. I hereby open to public hearing, and staff presentation is next, Tatiana, welcome.
Hello, Tatiana Childers, City of Oldsmar Planning and Redevelopment Director. So this is CA 2505 Adult Entertainment Code Amendments to the City of Oldsmar Land Development Code. Little bit of a background on this item, so Chapter 10, Article 2 of the City of Oldsmar Code regulates adult entertainment establishments in Oldsmar, and Section 1041 defines these businesses with Section 1076 sets distance required requirements. Updates were recommended by the City Attorney Office to clarify definitions of adult bookstores and materials, to ensure compliance with the state and federal law, and reflect Florida Statute 847.0134, which requires establishments to be at least 2,500 feet from schools. So again, this is a city-initiated request to amend the City of Oldsmar Land Development Code, Article 2 Adult Entertainment Code of Chapter 10 Amusement and Entertainment. The proposed amendment includes the following, so again, as I mentioned, updates to the definitions, so we're going to revise and clarify definitions under Section 1041, including adult bookstore, adult materials and related terms, and revise distance requirements. Amendment section, to amend Section 1076B to update distance separation standards for adult entertainment establishments. So this amendment was reviewed against the three conditions outlined in Section 3.13.2 of the Land Development Code. The amendment complies with the comprehensive plan and advances the purpose of the Land Development Code. So the ordinance updates definitions for clarity, including adult bookstores and adult materials. So in the ordinance, you can find those definitions if you need it, this is just a brief summary here. Update, also, this ordinance updates distance requirements for adult entertainment establishments to comply with state and federal law, which includes the 2,500 feet separation from existing schools for those establishments that are permitted after July 1st, 2001. So anything prior to July 1, 2001, you can have thousands, thousand linear feet from the existing, pre-existing school. So after 2001, it changes to 2,500. The amendment will contribute to promote the community welfare, the amendment clarifies definitions to reduce ambiguity and potential legal challenges, and the ordinance codifies updated minimum distance requirements to ensure compliance and allowing for the code enforcement. The amendment will not grant a special privilege to an individual property owner. This proposed land development text amendment will be applied uniformly to all applicants and will not provide any special privileges to an individual property owner. We have a recommended motion here, so we recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance amending the City of Oldsmar Land Development Code, Article 2 Adult Entertainment Code of Chapter 10 Amusement and Entertainments to update definitions and distance restrictions for adult entertainment establishments to comply with Florida law. And we're submitting our staff report into record. This completes my brief presentation.
Thank you, Tatiana.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions for staff, starting with you?
I don't.
Lynette?
I do not.
Ross?
I do not.
Bob?
Have you already identified the areas that would meet all these, all the regulations or not?
So currently, they will be allowed in the C2 Commercial General Zoning District of the city. And then each establishment will have to run a GIS analysis to see if the buffer, so we'll, we'll have to identify existing schools, churches, there are other items on this restricted list. So typically, it's a buffer, so you create buffers, buffers in your GIS map, and then if that facility falls within the C2 zoning district and also doesn't intersect with all those buffers, so that facility might be allowable. So currently, we have our flea market site where some of those bookstore, you know, items might be located.
Thank you, Tatiana, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I have no questions.
Jessica, none?
Nope.
C, C3, C2?
C2, Commercial General, yes.
That's pretty much the other side of Tampa Road, back in industrial area? You didn't do a map, so.
So I can bring a map, so basically, it's your Tampa Road corridor, it's your flea market site, and the Woodlands Square.
AMC.
That's the C2.
Okay, that's good enough, thank you. Since we don't have any more questions for staff, I will now open the public hearing. Those wishing to be heard on this issue, in favor of this item, please raise your hand. Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this item, please indicate your intentions, nope. Any written comments received? Thank you. Do you wish to make a closing statement, Tatiana, since you're the presenter applicant?
I do not have a closing statement, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I will close the public hearing. I seek a motion on this item to send it up to council.
Make a motion to approve to send it up to city council for approval?
As presented, might be a good addition to that?
As presented.
Yes, thank you. All in, a second, please.
Second.
All in, roll call, please.
Board Member Villa Fana?
Yes.
Board Member Stevens? Yes. Board Member Roundhouse?
Yes.
Board Member Kirby?
Yes.
Board Member Dingman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harvey?
Yes.
Chair Rain Bure?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Item six, CA 2025 Code Amendment to the City of Oldsmar Land Development Code related to maximum lot coverage of the front setbacks for residential mobile home parks and subdivisions, R6 District. This is a public hearing. Hello?
Good evening, Matt Jackson, City of Oldsmar Planning and Redevelopment Department Planning Manager. The agenda item before you tonight is for a land development code text amendment to the R6 zoning district with a city case number CA 25-06. So the R6 zoning district is unique in Oldsmar, in Oldsmar, as it applies exclusively to the Guller Village mobile home development, which was approved in two phases, phase one and two. Pursuant to the current R6 lot requirements, the total structural coverage of the entire mobile home development can exceed 40%. Additionally, pursuant to the R6 yard requirements, the front setback from the established property line is 15 feet. The residential urban land use designation allows a lot coverage of up to 65%. However, this provision is currently expressed only in the comprehensive plan and not in the Land Development Code. Homes in Phase One were constructed with a front setback typically ranging between 7.5 and 10 feet. During site plan approval for Phase Two, a variance was granted, reducing the front setback from 15 to 10 feet, applicable to the homes only in Phase Two. So this first graphic here is a location map showing the Guller Development and R6 zoning district, which again are one and the same, outlined in black there, at the southwest corner of the intersection of Tampa Road and Curlew. Next, this is the cover sheet for the approved site plan, showing the staff approval in the bottom left-hand corner. And also from the site plan, this is the second sheet of the site plan, which annotates that variance that I previously mentioned from the 15 feet to 10 feet for the front setback. This next graphic better shows the two phases of the Guller development. Phase One outlined in black, and the Phase Two outlined in red. As mentioned, in the R6 district, the total structural coverage of the entire mobile home development shall not exceed 40%. For other zoning district standards in other residential districts, the lot coverage is calculated on a per-lot basis. The current land use designation again allows a lot coverage of up to 65%. Accordingly, staff proposes text amendments to our six district standards to remove the reference to total subdivision structural coverage and instead include a maximum lot coverage of 65%, consistent with the underlying land use. Additionally, to ensure consistency between the Phase One and Phase Two plans and the recorded HOA bylaws, staff recommends reducing the front setback from 15 feet to 10 feet for the entire district. The text amendment request was reviewed against the three conditions in Land Development Code, Section 313.2, with the first condition being that the amendment complies with the comprehensive plan and advances the purposes of the Land Development Code. The current 15-foot front setback requirement conflicts with the established development plan and approved variance. To ensure consistency and clarity in applying the code, the front setback is recommended to be reduced to 10 feet. For consistency with the zoning standards established in other residential districts and the underlying land use, the lot coverage allows a lot coverage of 65%. However, this provision again is in the comp plan and not codified in the Land Development Code. This code clarification ensures that both the Land Development Code standards and the land use comprehensive plan provisions are properly enforced. Condition two, the amendment will contribute to promote the community welfare. The amendment will promote community welfare by creating a uniform development pattern standard for the R6 district, addressing the unique characteristics of the only R6 zone site in Oldsmar, where most structures already adhere to a 10-foot front setback. This revision will facilitate easier compliance for residents undertaking home replacements or expansion, reducing potential nonconformities and administrative burdens. Expressing lot coverage on a per-lot basis will promote uniform application of the code, ensuring that the adequate drainage and grease space are maintained. The 40% structural coverage provision is more appropriate to the overall subdivision design stage and does not allow staff to properly verify compliance on a per-lot basis. Last condition, that the amendment will not grant a special privilege to an individual property owner. The proposed text amendment to revise the front setback and codify the lot coverage of 65% on a per-lot basis in the R6 district will apply citywide to all properties zoned R6. The change uniformly affects the entire district without favoring an individual owner. As such, staff recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance to amend Land Development Code, Section 5474 area requirements, removing the 40% total structural coverage of the entire mobile home development, Section 5475 lot requirements, adding a maximum lot coverage of 65% and Section 5476 yard requirements, revising the front setback to establish property lines from 15 to 10 feet in the residential mobile home parks and subdivisions, R6 District. The staff report has been submitted for the record, this ends my presentation, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So at this point, we want to ask the board if you have any questions from us, starting once again on the right.
I do have some questions. So the purpose of reducing from the 10, from the 15 feet to 10 feet is basically to build more mobile homes?
No, so the, the homes in, so again, the mobile home development was built in two phases. The homes in Phase One were built at typical setbacks of seven and a half to 10 feet. And the homes in Phase Two received a variance from the 15-foot setback to 10 feet. So the setback, it's just to make a more consistent development pattern throughout the zoning district. You know, the lots are already developed, but it will make it easier for people who want to say, replace a mobile home, to do so without a variance.
So when you're saying replacing, the current people that are having 7.5 feet are going to maintain that, or will they have to update the property, how, how is that going to work?
Good question. The folks who have a front setback of less than 10 feet, they can continue to do so. There will be a non-conforming setback there, but they can continue to maintain, repair their home. No, they don't have to do anything inherently because of this zoning change, the setback change. Like, for instance, right now, for Phase One, the front setback is 15 feet. So we're actually making it less non-conforming, but no, it would only come into play if they wanted to replace the home. Then they would have to meet a 10-foot setback or request a reduced setback through a variance.
Okay, and where is this exactly located? I was trying to figure it out, where in Oldsmar is going to be the development?
You know where the Woodlands Square Shopping Mall is, with Shaker and Peel, all the bars, the restaurants? Okay, so it's just south of that.
Okay.
At the southwest corner of Curlew and Tampa Road.
Thank you.
Want to pull your map back up?
I can, would you like to see the map again?
I would appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I took a lot of time building it, so yeah, I'd be glad to show it. I thought I did a pretty good job on it.
I do like the color.
Thank you, yeah. And it's, it's actually, it's funny, when you use a dash line instead of a solid line, it looks much better, it's much more clear, so.
It looks better up here.
Always happy the way it came out, yeah, so thank you for asking, yeah.
It looks better up here than up here.
Are you clear on where Guller is?
Yes.
Are you clear where, where within Guller that we're doing this?
Yes.
Okay.
The entire, and again, this is the only area zoned R6, so it's one and the same, the R6 zoning district and then the Guller development.
Thank you.
Lynette?
I'll just ask to clarify, this basically is an administrative fix, we're fixing the language and it will cause less work for the planning and development team, should someone in Phase Two want to replace their home?
Correct, and just as important, if not more important, for the folks who live there, it's much, it's much, you're making the code more consistent with development pattern and the approved variance. And so it helps not only staff, but like I said, more important to residents.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross? I have two questions, one is in regards to, is there any more availability for an additional phase to be built?
No, it's built out.
Or are they maxed out? It's built completely out, okay, so no more additional home, mobile homes will be placed in, just replaced, as you said. Okay, that's one. The second one is in regards to the current work on Curly Road? The extensive work that's being done, is there any effect that's going to be to that property to, that actually butt up to Curly Road? Has there been any information shared regarding that?
I don't have information to comment on that.
Okay, okay.
Not as, not as part of this application.
Yeah.
I'd like to comment only on this application.
Understood.
And those are two separate items, so.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of like the elephant in the room when you talk to that particular subdivision, though, I mean. But that's all the questions I do have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bob?
Do I understand this, the main purpose of this change is to make conformity throughout the, throughout the codes? And is that, do I understand that correctly?
It's both to assist with making the land development code more consistent with the approved variance development pattern, as well as, just speaking of variances, if this wasn't changed and someone came in who wanted to have a house in Phase One with less than a 15-foot setback, or even less than 10, they've got to pay a $600 fee for that variance. Now they're going to have the opportunity of, when they're replacing their home in Phase One, if they can meet that 10-foot setback, great, then they don't have to come in for a variance, don't have to pay the fees. That's an added benefit, but yes, at this time, it's just more for consistency.
Okay, all right, good, that's all I have.
I guess just to kind of reiterate again, it's just to basically stay in line with the code?
That's, yes, that's a nice way to put it.
All right, thank you.
I had no questions, thank you.
Okay.
Now I'd like to remember, everybody, that we had a buffer down there by the DOT ditch, and we changed that buffer to stay compliance with the code to make it all even, and we ended up an 82-home condo next to the library. And it's like, got to be careful on staying in compliance to make everything look good in zoning. So I'm like looking for negative impacts here that could possibly happen with somebody with the seven and a half, and you make a 10, and what's going to happen? I mean, those people benefit two and a half feet, right? The existing.
I think Tatiana wants to say something.
I just wanted to add, just current provisions, we have steps that could be encroached up to three feet into the setback as well. So I don't believe when the code was in place, that setback provision encroachment was in place. So technically, it's going to be still, your building needs to be at 10, but then your steps to get to your mobile home, they will, they can encroach up to three feet, so that's your seven, kind of like you started seven. So it's going to be consistent with all of your HOA documents, so with all of the HOA bylaws, with the 10- HOA bylaws, with the 10-foot front setback. It's going to be consistent on your side for 5 foot for... Throughout the entire district. It's going to have a consistent look and consistent with the current code. Current code, again, calls for 15-foot front setback.
Right. So, it looks like everybody's going to get a benefit here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're done with questions, the board, for staff? Okay, now, by open the public hearing, those wishing to be heard, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to speak on this issue. Was...
Yeah.
Yes.
This was the issue you wanted to speak on?
Yes.
Please reidentify yourself.
Gail Richardson, 611 Kobe Way, Oldsmar, in Golar. And one of the questions we had is, what data was used to make this to be 15 or 10%? Because none of our information says 15, and we would just like to know, like, where that information came from.
15 feet or 10 feet?
Either one. We had 7 and 1/2 on our data and 5 and 1/2 for Phase 1 and 2, so we're confused about where 15 or 10 came from, and is there data?
I guess this gentleman will have to ask that question.
Are you specific... So, there's two datas, the 15 and the 10. So, the current set, the 15-foot, is from the actual R6 zoning district standards. That's what the front setback states in our Land Development Code. That's the 15-foot. The 10-foot setback was approved for the Phase 2 site plan as part of a variance application with it. That's where the 10 feet came from. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, because within our HOA, we've always gone 7 and 1/2 foot for Phase 1 and 5 and 1/2 for Phase 2. So, we don't understand where the 15-foot...
Where'd the HOA get their information?
We've been going with this, you know, all along with our architecture...
I think you might have to get with the planning department and clarify this.
I believe your HOA bylaws are 10 feet for Phase 2, not 5 and 1/2.
7 and 1/2, it was, right from the 7 and 1/2.
For Phase 2.
Right.
They're 10 feet, not 5 and 1/2.
So, did 7 and 1/2 come from the steps, the 3-foot?
7 and 1/2 is what it was built at historically, back in 1977.
And then...
But I'm not sure... I'm not sure what the R6... I'm not sure what the zoning district was exactly at that time, or what that standard was. We're just trying to make it more consistent for today's standards.
Because if you look at the data, there's probably several that do not meet this already.
Sure.
And our concern is, if there is a hurricane or a fire, could we rebuild? Because some people don't have 10 foot to the back or the front right now.
Will the...
If that's an issue...
Yes, if it's at 7 and 1/2 feet now, and say, someone did want to rebuild due to any reason, they would have to meet that 10-foot setback or ask for a variance. Now, I did go through... I looked at both the plat for Phase 1, which provided lot dimensions, and then the approved site plan for Phase 2, and actually, the lot dimensions between the two are quite similar. So, folks should be able to meet that 10-foot setback.
So, the person who wants to replace the mobile home now will be able to?
They should be able to, yes. Correct. Absolutely.
And then, we have people that are building out into their driveways. Is that an exception as well?
I'd have to look at that on a case-by-case basis.
The other question is, we're measuring from the middle of the road, the sidewalk. What if you don't have a sidewalk?
You're measuring from the property line, the front property line along the right way, right in front of the home.
Okay. So, what, if you have a sidewalk, is it the sidewalk?
No, we have to look on the survey. Typically, your sidewalk is just outside the front property line. There's usually some space there. I believe in Phase 1, I believe there was 2 feet from the back of sidewalk to the property line, but I'm not sure on that dimension, but the sidewalk is outside of your property, typically.
So, we really need someone to come and clarify this to people, because it's very confusing.
Well, that's...
You know, people have said, you know, they tried to put something, and they had to be 25 feet from the edge of the road. Other people said, oh, no, I'm only 7 and 1/2 feet from the sidewalk, so...
During my tenure here, I have taken many calls, emails from residents in Golar, talking about the difference in setbacks and such. This is going to clear this up, make it much more consistent, and it'll be much more easier to articulate to folks, just making the Land Development Code more consistent with the approved variance and then development pattern.
So, if I am 10 feet from something in, the only thing that can encroach on that are steps?
Projections. Steps would be an example of that.
Or screen rooms, or outbuildings?
Not a building, no, a projection, which would be more like your steps, sidewalk, things like that, but not... No, not part of the physical building, part of the primary structure.
Okay. And as far as the coverage for 65%?
Yes.
About the people that are covered now, as a grandfather? Like, my neighbor is... Theirs is completely covered with either brick or paper?
Or is it just case-by-case basis?
So, it was... We're not trying to... How can I... The intent of this is to make it easier on both the residents and then staff who's reviewing this.
I agree.
If somebody has done something on the property without a permit or with permits, they can... If it's done accordingly, correctly, with permits, that can continue to remain. Okay, say someone had permits, they had something done, and their lot coverage, for some reason, is over 65% right now. They can continue to maintain that and use that until such time it's redeveloped, and then they would need to meet the 65% coverage.
So, we do need a permit to put cement?
Absolutely. Yes.
And redevelopment means if you're damaged by a hurricane for a major loss?
Well, redevelopment is an umbrella statement, so anything you do to your property, yeah.
Tree falling, tornadoes.
But if you have questions on permitting, you want to come... You want to contact the planning redevelopment staff, so that we can specifically, on the case-by-case basis, let you know, does this need a permit? Does it not need a permit? And then provide the standards for that, and we're happy to do that for you.
Okay. Would it be possible to have someone come and discuss some of this? Is there still a lot of questions?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. So, what we could do, we can go to Golar Village with a workshop, kind of like a presentation, and have it scheduled right there. There may be the poolhouse there, where they have the community area, and then just explain all of this in with maps, maybe, and with some additional data, and then just have kind of like a... In between this meeting and the council, to provide...
That speaks of transparency, Tatiana. That's a great idea.
To provide additional clarity, because all of these, they're really just benefits. So, the 65% lot coverage, it's just not codified currently in the code. It makes it difficult for staff to really review lot by lot, so it's not there. So, the property line, that always comes up, so if we bring a couple of surveys as part of public records, and we demonstrate where a typical house in Phase 1 and typical house in Phase 2 is situated, and then, again, today, if Phase 1 house needs to be replaced, they will be required to provide that 15-foot front setback, not a 10-foot. So, 15-foot, from 7 and 1/2 to 15, unless they apply for a variance.
Under the current.
And this will fix that?
Under the current. It will fix it, where they will be able to apply for... They will be able to apply just for a permit with 10-foot setback, and to allow the front steps to encroach additional 3 feet into that front setback.
That includes ramps, right?
It does. So, anything that is kind of like a projection, not a vertical wall.
Right. I have a question. Do you represent the HOA?
I do not.
You do not? Well, someone would have to connect to the HOA to connect with the planning department to have this open house.
I will connect with John Monser, who is the president of the HOA for Golar, and will set it up between this meeting and the next meeting at the council, to just have an extra engagement, kind of like community engagement piece, if that's something that could be incorporated into your motion, so... Per the attorney, maybe?
So, we...
You can. I mean, it's not necessarily...
So that we don't have to bring this back to the planning, unless we find some additional items.
You would need to bring it back in the absence of that, anyway.
Okay.
That's a voluntary commitment on your part, that I don't necessarily believe this board needs to memorialize in a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tatiana. Do you have any more questions?
No, thank you.
So, this is simply a question for staff. Are you a proponent or opponent of this item?
We're just concerned that if, you know, if something happened, will we ever be able to rebuild, or will we have a lot that we can't build on, because these... It's like the shifting sands of Texas, 15, 7, 5 and 1/2, but no one knows what it is, you know?
I think that the people who are at 7 and 1/2 now are the ones who would lose 2 and 1/2 feet under the new system, but that's as... On redevelopment. And those are the only people that would not gain from this. It looks like everybody else would. And I don't know how many of those 7 and 1/2s there are. I stay out of Golar Village ever since they told me I didn't want to be... They didn't want me for their councilman.
No, there's actually quite a few, especially people are on a corner, because they're not square corners in a lot of cases. So, those people are, you know, very close to the road.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've been over your five minutes. Does anyone want to speak in favor... Any audience want to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this item? Seeing none. Any written opposition or communications received? Hearing none. Reading none. Do you want to make any closing statements, staff? Seeing none. I entertain a motion for this item.
I'll make a motion to forward Agenda Item 6, CA 25-06, to the city council.
Do we need to add to an addition workshop?
Would you like to add the workshop, with the recommendation of workshop, to Golar, as Tatiana recommended?
I thought we were... I thought he said we didn't need to.
You're not... Legally, it's kind of a neutral... Kind of a neutral thing. You're not required to, and you're not...
Yeah, but you...
And you're not prohibited either way.
I think we ought to remind council that they need to look into this and encourage staff to do it.
Okay. So, I approve it with a...
An addition of a workshop session in Golar Village?
Thank you, Amber.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Public roll call.
Board member Villafana?
Yes.
Board member Stevens?
Yes.
Board member Roundhouse?
Yes.
Board member Kirby?
Yes.
Board member Dingman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harvey?
Yes.
Chair Ryan Bure?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 7 to 0 as well.
Thank you very much. Item 7, CA 2507, Code Amendment to City Oldsmar Land Development Code, Article 14, Supplemental Regulations of the LDC by creating Section 14.14, Certified Recovery Residences. This is a public hearing. Staff, presentation. Thank you.
Yes, Tatiana Childress again, Planning and Redevelopment Director. So, this is Case CA 2507, Certified Recovery Residences. To the City of Oldsmar Land Development Code, Amendment to the City of Oldsmar Land Development Code. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with this microphone, so it goes out.
Do you have the other microphone?
No, we don't do that here.
No?
Now, the same... Dancing.
I switch to that one sometimes.
I know you like it. I watched you on TV.
Me, too.
So, a little bit of a background on this. So, in 2025, Florida passed Senate Bill 954, which sets rules for review and approval of certified recovery residences. The law recognizes that individuals recovering from substance use disorders have greater success to stay sober when living in structured recovery homes during or after treatment. By January 1, 2026, the city must update the Land Development Code to define recovery residences, establish review and approval procedures, and provide a process for exceptions in compliance with the state and federal laws. So, again, this is a city-initiated request to amend the City of Oldsmar Land Development Code, Article 14, Supplemental Regulations by creating the Section 14.14, Certified Recovery Residences, to establish a process for the review and approval of the certified recovery residences within the LDC in accordance with the Florida statutes 397.48715A. The amendment request was reviewed against the three conditions outlined in the Section 3.13.2 of the Land Development Code. With the first condition being, the amendment complies with a comprehensive plan and advances the purpose of the Land Development Code. So, this amendment ensures compliance with the Florida statute 397.48715A. It aligns city procedures with the state law while preserving local land use controlled and community compatibility. It defines the key terms, such as certified recovery residences, certificate of compliance, recovery residence administrator, and Level 1 through 4 facilities. It establishes review, approval, and accommodation, and also establishes revocation procedures. The amendment will contribute to promote the community welfare, so this amendment will promote the community welfare by creating a consistent review process for certified recovery residences, ensuring compliance with the state law while maintaining local land use regulations, and allowing for the... For the revocation of certification if certification lapse or conditions are violated. The amendment will not grant a special privilege to an individual property owner. This proposed amendment will be applied uniformly to all applicants throughout the established procedures, and will not provide any special privilege to an individual property owner. With that, staff recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance amending the City of Oldsmar Land Development Code, Article 14, Supplemental Regulations by creating Section 14.14, Certified Recovery Residences, to establish a process for the review, approval of certified recovery residences within the LDC in accordance with the Florida statute I've submitted the staff report into the record, and thank you.
Thank you, Tatiana. Does the board have any questions for staff? Start on the right again.
I do. When we're talking about certified recovery residences, do we have any already in Oldsmar?
I'm not aware of any at this time. We have group homes, we may have other facilities, but not the certified recovery residences, so this is something brand-new here for our town.
Is there a project for... To build something like that? Is there...
So, it's not going to be built as a project, so these are individual homes within your neighborhood that will have to get state certification to be able to provide a setting as if it's just a regular house, where, you know, a person recovers from such facility. So, it's not something that you will be building for, like, an institution to combine all of the people into one place, so that's something that they've done in the '70s. It didn't work, so right now, they're trying to really... There's some evidence that, again, as I mentioned, so when these facilities are kind of like located throughout your different residential areas, they're more effective than the one institution.
So, how are we going to locate these residences? Are they going to be private-owned? Is this something that the city is going to be funding? And are we going to have...
So, we're not funding anything here, so what the process will look like, like a zoning application. An applicant will have to submit an application to the city's Planning and Redevelopment Department, outlining the residence and outlining which type of facility they will be. So, in your staff report, there is an ordinance with some definitions for different levels, so you have different... Level A, Level 2, Level 3. I'm sorry, Level 1, 2, 3, and 4. So, that's on page 2 of 7 on the proposed ordinance in the back, so it's like a business owner, so the same as a group home owner, so they would have to be certified with the[1757.41] So they would have to be certified with the state as Level One through Four facility. They will have to submit an application to the City of Oldsmart and to identify how many people are going to be in that residence. And staff, because you're limited to how many patients or recovery patients versus like staff. And depending on which level you're in, so if you review these definitions, you'll see that Level Four requires staff to stay consistently within that, to spend basically, to live within that home as well.
So basically, we are going to have a residence with more than one person living on it. Is going to be something that is going to be monitored by who? Is that going to be a private company?
By the state. So the state sets the rules. Currently, you have different regulations for the group homes, and I'm more familiar with the group homes. You're allowed up to seven or six, is it six or seven? Six, up to six in, like, your typical three-two residential home. And this will be a similar scenario. So the state sets the, how many people could be per particular square footage of the house and how many of them are required, are allowed to be.
On this, I, I would appreciate to have a little bit more information in regards to how the program is going to work. My concern is the, the location of these facilities. Where are going to, where are they going to be located? Because I have seen a lot of these facilities in San Pete, and unfortunately, nearby the neighborhood where those facilities are located, they don't turn the most positive. So I, I am just concerned in the way that, that the facilities are going to work. And I understand it's going to be under the state control, but that doesn't really give us the guarantee that that is going to be well managed, unfortunately.
Sure. So it is a state preemption, so we must place these definitions and these provisions in the code by January first, 2026, which is this January coming up. And this is not something optional. So there are other zoning provisions, I believe, that we could address during the application process. And the application itself, the zoning application, is kind of like reviewed concurrently. So we need to have the language in the place in the Land Development Code via ordinance so that we have something in the ordinance that allows us to then work on the actual application process. And if they're asking for some provisions, exceptions, so then the council is actually the ultimate authority here as provided in the ordinance that attached to the staff report, who may review those one, kind of like a variance almost, so one residence at a time if they're requesting certain accommodations from the rules, so. But the statute requires you to approve administratively, from what I understand. So it's administrative approval, meaning that you submit the zoning variant, the zoning applications to the planning, Planning and Redevelopment or any zoning department. And administrative sign-off basically on application within thirty days is required by current statute. So again, this is brand new.
So you're just building a, basically, you're, you're building a framework to have a framework in place so that if the city is approached to have these type of homes, you have a framework in place? Or these are the guidelines that you have to follow if you're going to have this type of home in our community, correct?
Correct. So we have the framework that was provided to the attorneys, the city attorney's office, to us. And then that's why we're here to adopt these.
Is this mandated by the state to have in each city?
To have provisions within your land development codes, which is the code of ordinances? Yes.
Just kind of have a question to figure off back that, sorry. Since Ms. Tania did have some concerns of there's other board members, how could they address those concerns later to help with the process? Is there anything you recommend? Or would they just need to go to City Council and address that or approach them?
I'm sorry, would you mind rephrasing the question? So at the time of the application for a particular home, if they meet all of the statutory requirements from the state? So we have to approve this administratively. So if they're asking something outside or what's in the framework, then the council is the one who will.
Right.
And I believe that process will be, will have to be advertised probably as a, as a public hearing. I'm not sure. So it says the council will have to approve this.
Not for administrative approval, I mean.
As a conditional use almost. So I'm thinking it's like a conditional use.
But if it meets the standards under the statute, then no, there's not going to be any public hearing. Right. I think one thing to remember here is that this community, recovering folks, have many times over the years been subject to those kinds of public hearings and are turned down for housing based on community input. Obviously typically negative. And so this process, first of all, I would note that the process is not, as my father used to tell me, you can do this two ways, happy or sad. But you're doing it either way. So I'd like you to do it happy, but if you do it sad, then I'm just as, I'm just as happy either way. And in fact, this, this requires a process for an accommodation. Reasonable accommodation is a term that generates from the Americans with Disabilities Act and the old Rehabilitation Act that preceded it, and to some degree, the Fair Housing Act. A, a person seeking to operate one of these can come into your community today, right now, and seek a reasonable accommodation. And then you have to sort of make up a process on the fly if you don't already have one. I, I won't, I don't speak for legislature, Lord knows, but I think what this is attempting to do is to make that process a bit more uniform and a bit more predictable in, in process, if not result, for the folks seeking this type of, type of living arrangement. I don't know if that was responsive to your question, I hope that it was.
It was just, since she did have some concerns. I mean, I understand the state statute, so it, it does need to happen one way or another. So if she has certain concerns, what can she do later is what I was trying to ask? Or if there is anyone?
Yeah, there, there isn't, there is a palpable intention in this, in the statute not, not to permit those kinds of intrusions into this process beyond staff level.
Okay.
If there, so do you have nuisances within the code? So if this becomes a nuisance and you have ten cars, something like this parked, you know, on sidewalks and blocking the sidewalks or something that is within the nuisances? So then it will be covered under the code enforcement, I believe.
Same way you can enforce your code as to any other type of violation.
I think we've fallen into discussion here rather than the questions of staff.
Whoops.
So Lynette, would you have any questions of staff?
I do not, thank you, Tatiana.
Ross, do you have any?
Nope.
Bob, do you have any?
Questions? No.
Okay. Now you, Amber, have already asked some questions, you have more?
Um, no questions, I understand it's a state statute, so thank you.
Jessica, do you have any?
Nope, you answered my questions.
Okay. Tatiana, I have a question. Don't, we have had group homes here in Oldsmart, haven't we? There used to be one on Washington Street, cost quite a bit of kerfuffle in town, if you would, at one time. It was a youth home, though, I believe, Wayward Kids. You remember that? There was, I don't think there are any rules on group homes.
So there are state rules on group homes for sure. And there are also how many, again, resident could be in a group home? So there's a framework that's already established by the state on the group homes. And they do have to have, like, the fire inspections and all this other items.
So we have any rules in this documentation about vehicles, staffing, parking? There aren't any, I didn't see.
That will be part of the application. So we will be asking those questions in the application itself, in the zoning application that will be submitted to the city for administrative approval.
And according to this, Level Four is like twenty-four hours a day, almost the max, max security on recovery residents. And that would be the scariest group to have in your neighborhood. Because this isn't alcohol, this could be drugs and all kinds of issues like that. And I don't think there's going, your next door neighbor's going to have a positive. Is there recourse for the neighbors? Now, an HOA probably won't allow this. So you're wide open in Old, Oldsmart where there is no HOAs, there aren't any HOAs. So, you know, an HOA is not going to let a recovery residence in their area. I don't think that would pass their, their rules. Can they, Mr. Lawyer, can they block an HOA, block a, this type of?
You know, I realize at the outset, I didn't introduce myself. My name is Jay Daniel, I'm Tom Trask's partner. I hope that I'm free and clear of all following flags or other hazards that might befall me so I don't get mentioned later on. I'm not an HOA lawyer, so I don't know whether HOAs have the latitude to outlaw this. I sincerely doubt it.
Yeah.
From, to your prior point, this is simply a home. It's construed under the law as a home that's no different from any other residential property in your community. What the, what the ordinance is doing says, look, if it's, if your application complies in all other respects with our code, you have an administrative approval. Period. Done and over with. If you require some kind of accommodation, that, that's never going to see City Council. If the application requires some kind of accommodation, they, you might call that a variance. Under the FHA, the ADA, and the Rehab Act, it's, it's more properly characterized as a reasonable accommodation, then it may go to the council for review. But any decision that the City Council makes, and I, I will speak here for Mr. Trask a little bit, is going to be based on the physical characteristics of the usage, not the identity or characteristics of the users or the occupants. That makes sense.
It can be a mighty big house to handle anything that's going to make a profit. And I don't think those are available in most of our residential areas.
Having, having litigated more than one case in, in this arena, I can tell you that some of those properties are, you're correct. You have double occupancy, sometimes triple occupancy. We still have those things in play here, but many of them are two, three, four people, like you would find in any other one, two, three bedroom home here in Oldsmart.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I have one last question.
Yes, a question of the lawyer or staff?
To the staff.
Well, he is staff, never mind. Go ahead.
So my other concern is, would this affect the property price? Because we have, I mean, I am supporting that everyone has to, the, the opportunity to have a chance and, and to be able to recover. And, and what the state is saying is correct, that if they have a house, most likely, they are going to recover. But at the same time, I am concerned for my grandchildren and, and children and families in the area. My, the value of my property because of the neighborhood where I live also could be affected because I have a home that is going to be obviously supporting people that are in recovery. And it's just a concern.
And it's a not in my backyard thing, and I get that. It would be nice if there was a twenty-five hundred foot separation between this adult business and your, your house or your church or your school. But that's not the way it's going to work.
Right.
So that being said, anyone else have any questions of staff or any concerns? No? Hearing none. So I opened a public hearing. Those wishing to be heard, please make yourself known. Seeing none in opposition or or anyone in favor. Any written comments? No, seeing none. No closing statements, I assume, because Tatiana sat down. So now, at this point, I seek a motion on CA twenty-five zero seven.
I'll make a motion on Agenda Item Seven, CA twenty-seven dash zero seven, Code Amendment to the City of Oldsmart Land Development Code to forward it to City Council.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think now's the time to pour out your hearts on this issue.
I will.
Run with it.
Having worked in rehabilitation for well over fifty years, I have worked with numerous group homes, halfway houses, and things of that nature. They're, they're, as you said, they're, they're most all located in, in neighborhoods, suburban neighborhoods. There is no twenty-five hundred foot buffer. It's, you know, if the, if the lot line is ten feet, that's how far you are from the, the house. In my career, I cannot recall one single halfway house, group home, or other facility of this nature not having problems with the residents in the neighborhood. I don't, I don't, I don't want to say that they're no good and you can't have them because people need help. And I, I, a lot of, I mean, people need help. That's, that's what my career was, helping people. But I just have such mixed feelings and such fear when things like this are placed in direct neighborhoods, where there's regular people, children. I, I just, I, I, and I know, again, you know, social workers theories are going to say, you know, well, we want to normalize these people as much as you can. So then you put them in a, you know, in a neighborhood. You don't put them in an industrial complex, you know? So I've heard that argument, you know, all my life, too. But I just, with the interaction that I've had with the, the group homes, et cetera, I'm, I'm just opposed to placing them in, directly in neighborhoods.
I don't see a way to protect.
There isn't, and that's.
Not with this, legally, you know, with this.
Yeah, but you know, and, and he's right, you know, the Rehab Act, I know it's, it's a, it's a big question. There's a lot of legal problems that goes on with this. But I just, I don't know, I just can't, I, my experience tells me that there'll be a problem. And I'm concerned.
Who makes the final approval on a decision? That somebody comes to the city and says, I want to build this, do this home here down on Lafayette? And, and who says it's okay? Do they go before the very Board of Adjustment? They go to Tatiana? Then do they go to the council and get it approved? Do we have a?
If it's, if the application is fully compliant with the city's code, then it's approved administratively. If it requires anything beyond that, if it requires some kind of accommodation, which you might otherwise view as a variance, depending on the nature of the request, it will go to City Council. City Council is going to be bound by the criteria evidence found and presented at a, at a hearing, at a public hearing.
So they did apply to the Planning Department?
So typically, Planning Board deals with cases that cover the entire, like this. So it will affect multiple boards. So our Board of Adjustment or the City Council, they can approve one property at a time, kind of like vote. So this will be just go and straight to the City Council for approval if that approval is not administrative.
So there would be a, like, an, an application process?
Yes. So similar to our conditional use approval. So today, we have in, within the Land Development Code, conditional use approval for those uses that not specifically expressed by a certain zoning district or they're slightly outside of what's defined. So then those conditions, they have ten or eleven different conditions that an applicant must demonstrate that they're meeting all of those conditions. And that is being presented to the City Council for their approval and vote.
Can the city be sued by an organization like this if they say, no, you can't do that down there? Doesn't it fit your?
Oh, my goodness, Mr. Chairman, if they couldn't, I wouldn't have a lot to do all day. No, I'm kidding. No, yes, the answer, the answer to the question is, can they sue? The answer is always yes.
Well, anybody can sue anybody, I get it, I mean, are we not held harmless as a city?
No, 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 you're absolutely not held harmless. There has been quite a bit of litigation over, over the course of many years regarding this type of usage in jurisdictions throughout the country, not just Florida. But Florida has seen its share, and Pinellas County has seen its share. Again, I don't want to speak for the Florida Legislature, but I think what they're trying to accomplish here is, you know, and divorcing it from the issue of, of recovery residences, this is a little bit more chipping away at, at the city's home rule authority. Not sure this is the worst home rule intrusion I've ever seen. It certainly isn't because, you know, this is not necessarily one of those issues that I think is harmed by a, by a, by a blanket, uniform approach to it. But the point is, yes, you can be sued. There is and is going to remain always liability, I think, here for the city if, you know, at the first level, a contention is made that our application met the requirements of the code, but city staff disagrees. That's potentially a litigation point, an inflection point. I think the more common inflection point will be where it goes to the City Council for determination, and there are denials of the requested accommodation. And, and the code that's been written for you, and which is, I say it's written for you, it's written based on the criteria given to us by the state. One of the critical ones is, it's on page fifty-one of your packet. It's in Section D five of your ordinance. It says the requested accommodation is necessary to establish the property as a certified recovery residence. That's where a lot of the litigation, since you asked about it, revolves around. It revolves around the question of whether the accommodation that's being. It revolves around the question of whether the accommodation that's being asked for, we're asking you to flex your code to do a particular thing to accommodate this particular usage. How does that flexing of the code, how does that accommodation address or ameliorate the effects of the disability or the addiction that's being experienced by the users of the home? Yes, ripe for litigation. Not necessarily in Oldsmar, I don't know if it'll come up or not, but yes, there's certainly going to be the possibility for litigation.
So, I think it's up for the council when they get an application is to protect us in our homes from people running amok outside of these places, as if that's indeed what does happen. I don't, I don't know what to speak to. I mean, you said, a lot of times, it gets uncomfortable in the neighborhood. Running amok is probably a wrong term, but...
Well, going back, going back to the application, if I have a lot in Oldsmar, and I want to build my home, my home, just for me and my family, and if I, if my builder presents plans that comply with all the codes, complies completely, no questions whatsoever, then I should be issued a building permit, period, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If I come into the city and I say, "I want to build a halfway house and going to house these people there," and if I make, my presentation is, meets all codes, meets all requirements, city has to issue me a permit, correct?
Yes.
There's no protection. Then there's no protection for the next-door neighbor. Good luck.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. I just...
Is this a new law? Why did we have this framework just now? And why was this not set up? Is this the new administration?
State mandated, right? The state just came down?
It was covered at the beginning of my PowerPoint presentation, and it's also specified in my staff report. So, as of this past legislative session that ended, yes. And as of July 1st, 2025, there are certain bills that became the law. So, we have to implement certain of those by a certain time. So, this one is time-sensitive with January 1st, 2026. We have to have some kind of framework within our Land Development Code via ordinance to allow these facilities and to provide reasonable accommodations for these facilities. So, again, this is mandated by the state law.
And as the gentleman said, the chipping away at home rule. I don't have any more discussion items. Thank you for chatting away about this. I guess it's time for a roll call vote.
Board Member Villafana?
Yes.
Board Member Stevens?
Yes.
Board Member Rundhaus?
Yes.
Board Member Kirby?
Yes.
Board Member Dingman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harvey? Vice Chair Harvey?
I know, I'm...
Chew on it. Take your time.
I'm going to vote no.
Chair Rayn Bure?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5 to 2.
Thank you very much. So, I think that concludes our evening. I seek a motion for adjournment.
Still moved.
Thank you. Motion, meeting adjourned.